You can try facebook.com/lnktvcity. So, we wanted to get in our new director for Lincoln Transportation and Utility, Elizabeth Elliott, to give us really the fundamental tutorial on where does this money come from for helping us do the roadwork that we get so many questions and concerns and complaints from our constituents. Where does the money come? How much does the federal government provide? How much does the state government provide? And what is our matching local contribution? What is the wheel tax? I mean, I think we get that question asked more and more and like, how come you're not spending my wheel tax on the roads? You know, that's the other question. So, Liz, I'm going to be quiet and turn it over to you. And I know that we're going to have individual follow-up meetings so that we can, you know, take notes if we're not sure what to ask, but we can certainly follow up with you in later on. So, I'm going to be quiet and turn it over to Liz. And I'm glad Donna Garden is here too, because Donna's a pro as well. So, it's all about you guys. Take it away.
Well, thank you very much. And I appreciate the opportunity to come and speak with all of you. And this is just going to be a very, kind of a broad 10,000-foot overview for transportation funding. I am going to share my screen. I've got a short PowerPoint. I also want to thank you, because this is actually very timely, as this week is actually National Public Works Week. And so, can you guys all see my screen where it says Lincoln Transportation Utilities? You can? Okay. Perfect. And so, it is National Public Works Week. So, would love to give a shout out to all of the LTU employees, both on the transportation team and the utilities team. It's an annual event, May 17th through 23rd this year. Little different, since we're all kind of working remotely and doing that, but wanted to do the shout out here and make sure you guys were aware of that event going on. But focusing on transportation, what do we mean when we say the transportation team of LTU? Well, it keeps growing, but the one that we traditionally know are the street construction, our street rehabilitation, traffic operations, street operations and maintenance, sidewalks, and more recently, we've added active transportation, and that's the scooters and the bike share program. As part of transportation, we have 1,550 miles of sidewalks to maintain and repair. That's enough sidewalks to go from here to San Francisco. And the sidewalks keep growing as the city of Lincoln keeps growing. We also have over 3,000 lane miles of road that we have to maintain. That's kind of where we fall into the street operations and maintenance. And that includes pothole repairs, snow removals, and those kind of ongoing operations and maintenance. We talk about traffic operations. What does that mean? Well, we have 430 traffic and pedestrian signals here in the city. We have on top of that approximately 80,000 signs in the city. It's about 40,000 regulatory and warning signs, and nearly 40,000 street name signs and guide signs. So, when you think about all these signs, all of the signs, whether it's A Street or Apple Street, all of those signs are part of our traffic operations and part of that. The other thing that we have are 700 miles of pavement markings, all of the striping that goes on the streets, the white lines, the yellow lines, the bike lanes, that type of street markings is also falls under the transportation. And that includes, we've talked about snow removal, sanitation, so the stormwater drainage, the street sweeping programs, our asset management, and then, of course, the transportation administration that goes into all of that. And all of these miles and numbers continue to grow every year as we add more miles of lanes and roads and sidewalks. And oftentimes, we overlook that, yeah, we're going to build new roads and we're going to have all this new growth, but we have to think long-term and how are we maintaining that? Are we building in the budget the ability for us to continue to maintain 10, 20, 30 years down the road? So, just because we have the money to build a road, it doesn't stop there. We have to continue to think about the traffic operations and the street maintenance and operations. And then, more recently, obviously, is the active transportation. So, we have the bikes, and hopefully, once things start to open up, we'll get the scooters going as well. So, that's all of transportation. So, how is all of this funded? We have six buckets, basically, as to where we get our funding for transportation. It's the highway allocation funds, AKA the gas tax, street improvement vehicle tax, impact fees, the recent quarter cent sales tax. We've got general revenue and federal funds. And so, we'll kind of see how that breaks it down. The 1819, this is how it broke down after actual collections. We had a total budget of $60.2 million. Forty-five percent of that came from highway allocation funds, and that is state funds. The next largest one was the wheel tax, the street improvement vehicle tax, and that was 31%. At this time in 1819, we didn't have Lincoln on the move, so there's nothing there. 10% of it was federal funds, 3.4% was general revenue, and then, 8% were the impact fees for fiscal year 1819. Currently, we're in the 1920 budget, and the original budget was expected to be 70.2 million. Obviously, we expect some decline, both in the fuel tax and sales tax. So, what we are looking at collected to date is $52 million, with 41% of that coming from highway allocation, 23% is coming from the wheel tax, 10% is the Lincoln on the Moves, 12% is federal funds, and then, both 7% is general revenues and impact fees. This is where we're currently sitting, and we would expect that these percentages would remain about the same for the last portion of this fiscal year. Then, the revised ones, which we've done with the recent projections and working closely with the City Finance Department and Brandon's group, we expect those percentages ultimately to get to 67.7 million. So, as you can see, from the 70.2 to the 67.7, it is a slight decline, but it's not insurmountable. It doesn't, it shouldn't have a huge effect. It'll have some effect, but hopefully not a huge impact. To kind of give you a better understanding of each of these funds, highway allocation, as you saw, has consistently been the largest funding source. This comes from the fuel tax, vehicle registration, the state highway trust fund, and other state programs. This is used for CIP projects and our basic operations and maintenance. The next largest portion of our funding is the street improvement vehicle tax, or the wheel tax, as everybody knows it. And that wheel tax is divided into three buckets. We've got the residual fund, the construction fund, and then, the residential rehab fund. The residual fund is 50% of it, and all of that is used for street improvements, operations, and maintenance. The 35.14% is, can only be used for construction, design, and right-of-way acquisitions. And that's limited just by, in statute and code. And then, the remaining 14.8% can only be used for rehabilitation of residential streets and for no other purpose. So, there are very specific limitations on how we can use the wheel tax. The next largest source that we have is the Lincoln on the Move program. And as you know, this is that additional quarter cent sales tax that will be collected, started in October of 2019, and will continue until September 30th of 2025. And transportation team working with the ACT, the committee, have developed, basically, three areas where this money is going to be invested. 73.5% will be directed to maintaining existing streets. So, this is the rehabilitation of those streets we already have. 25% will be directed to streets that are supporting new growth within the city. And then, 1.5 is going to the RTSD project at 33rd Street and Cornhusker Highway. So, this is how Lincoln on the Move will be designated. ACT has listed out a number of projects that they believe are priorities. We have a few projects that are under construction and a few that are in the process of the bidding phase, and will continue to move forward on those, thankfully, with smart planning and conservative sales tax estimates in the beginning, where we'll see a slight dip. But because we had such good revenue coming in from the fall of last year, it should ultimately balance out, and we look like we should be doing pretty well the first year, this year and next year for Lincoln on the Move. The next largest funding source we have is the federal funds, which is the block grant program. This is the funds that are received through the MPO, and the MPO approves and distributes these funds. They are used specifically on federally approved projects. Our next largest sources are the impact fees, and these are the charges levied against new construction, and they can only be spent within the benefit of that district in which they were collected. So, again, there's a limitation on where these funds can be used. And finally, our smallest area are the general funds. This is, as you know, mainly property tax and sales tax, but it does include some other miscellaneous funding, some utility cuts, permits, inspection fees. And the only thing that the general fund benefits is the sidewalk program and right now are stormwater drainage projects. So, anything that is street-related, that's all coming from federal and state dollars. It is not general fund sourced. The only stuff that general funds ultimately pay for are those sidewalks and the drainage One of the questions that we frequently get are, okay, you have this money, how do we figure out how you're going to spend it? And there's a lot of different components that determine what projects this money goes towards. And it all basically starts at the top with a comprehensive plan, and then, kind of funnels on down through the MPO, the Long Range Transportation Plan, the Transportation Improvement Plan, and then, ultimately, the capital improvement plans. And throughout this, we solicit public feedback, we solicit and encourage and want council's feedback on information, and there's a number of steps throughout this where council can provide feedback. And the main parts, obviously, are the comprehensive plans, since that comes to you and you're approved, but also through your approval of the CIP and the two-year budgets. And even though these all happen at very specific moments, every two years or every five years, council, as council members and the public, can always reach out directly to myself, to the planning department, to David Carey, to Lonnie, and those types of things, and to encourage that, to see how we can develop our priorities, see what things we look into, and how we can develop the next CIPs and LRTPs and those types of things. As part of the two-year budget, that contains our operations and maintenance, that's where we budget for snow removal, pothole fillings, those types of things, those ongoing projects that aren't the new and shiny streets, but obviously, work that needs to get done. And so, that basically walks us through the whole overview of where our funding is. I didn't want to get too far into the weeds, because I wasn't sure exactly what questions you might have specifically, but I wanted to give you a general overview. If you're wanting more of an explanation for the MPO and the Long Range Transportation Plan, I would probably recommend that we set aside an hour for that, just because there's so much detail. Maybe David could probably get through it faster in about 45 minutes, but it would probably be better for David to walk you through that. He's had more of the background, and because planning also handles the day-to-day management of the MPO, they could give you a better understanding of that process, how it works, and all of the committees and the participation and all of that. But obviously, even though the MPO and the LRTP don't necessarily get approved by council, the council is represented on that. The chair and vice chair are part of those committees, and so, they can put, provide their input in that way as well. So, even though there's not direct approval, there is input in that, in those stages. So, but if you wanted to get into the MPO, I would say that we schedule that for June, or David's here, if you have specific questions about MPO, he might be able to answer those better than I could, and I hate to do a disservice to it. So, do you have any specific questions that maybe I can answer for you?
Are there any questions for Liz Richard?
Yeah, Liz, you talked about, is it just the transportation department that's funded through the street funds, I guess I'm calling it, that's funded by allocations, wheel tax, and those? What department? I mean, the whole department or partially, or how's the department funded? It's what I wanted.
The whole department as a whole? Well, yes, this is all just for transportation side of the house. For the utility side of the house, there's other sources, obviously. Those are rates and other funding sources there, but this one, the highway allocations and all of those, is just for the transportation team.
So, the maintenance of the streets also comes out of the wheel tax and such, right?
That is correct.
Snow removal, pothole?
Yes, that's all part of, yep, that's all part of operations and maintenance.
Okay. Any idea how much that budget is, or it's not in the CIP itself?
No, that actually will fall under the two-year budget and the street operations and maintenance line item. And Richard, I apologize, I don't have the budget pulled up here in front of me, but I could email that to you.
No, that's fine. We'll see it later.
Yes, you will. It is a specific line item in the budget. Yes.
That's a big question that I always hear, how much is our, how much out of like, snow removal? How much of that snow removal is out of the general fund? I said, I don't think any of it is.
And you are correct. None of that is out of the general fund. That is all out of the highway allocations, kind of those six bucks, those five, actually. Because the only thing out of general fund would be the sidewalks and the drainage.
Okay.
Man, I saw James Michael, your hand was up earlier.
I just, I'm a little confused. So, snow removal, where does that come out of again?
That comes out of kind of the overall, highway allocation funds is primarily where that's going to come out of. And something here real quick. It includes, you know, primarily highway allocations, some wheel tax, but that's going to be the primary sources. None of it would be general fund, though.
And then, with wheel tax, 50% goes to operation and maintenance, 35.14 goes to construction, 14.86 goes to residential. Can you define a little bit more what operation and maintenance means for that 50% and some of the stuff that comes out of that?
Operation and maintenance, well, that is more of the general, the potholes, the mills and overlays, the snow removal could come out of that, the administration. It could be some sidewalks on that, or some of those as well, depending on the projects, and if there's certain ADA requirements, those types of things. But primarily, your basic rehab-type work on streets.
I just got another question. Sorry, I saw Councilwoman Washington, her hand's up, so I just got one more question, if that's okay with you, Councilwoman. I think like, one thing I'm having a hard time figuring out in my head is, what projects for like, a street would go through like, the 50%, or would it go through residential, right? Because if some of that maintenance is coming out of that 50%, can you help kind of clarify that for me a little bit?
And what I could, I would have to double-check on, I don't have a specific list here, and I don't want to miss anything, but what I will do is I will work with Lonnie and develop a list of everything that would come out of that, just so I don't overlook something, and I don't want to mislead you on what all comes out of that.
Liz, you know what I think would be helpful is if you just broke down a case study, like, say, North 70th Street. That was one of the biggest, I guess, complaints that were, the most complaints that we received from a lot of constituents about, you know, we need to make sure that the quarter cent sales tax goes towards that, but it's probably not just quarter cent sales tax. I mean, or maybe you can think of a better case study to show us, here's a recent project that was completed, these are the buckets of funding that are sources that were tapped for the completion of that project. And I think that would give us a better idea, you know, whether it's coming more out of a residential component of the wheel tax, or if it's part of operations and maintenance, or if there was a state funding matched. I mean, I think that helps us get a better idea, and then, really, who makes those decisions on which bucket is shared for this project and why?
No, but what I can do is I can work with the transportation team and maybe come up with three or four case studies and try and do a breakdown and show which funding source is, because it's going to be more than one for each project.
That's great. Thank you. Isanga, I saw you had your hand up too.
Thank you, Chairman. I have a question about the Long Range Transportation Plan. So, I'm familiar with the comp plan, I think we all are, and I know that the comp plan is used as the basis for the Long Range Transportation Plan, but I'd like you to talk a little bit about what goes into the Long Range Transportation Plan and who is sitting at the table developing the Long Range Transportation?
And actually, if you don't mind, I might lean on David Carey's expertise on this, because I don't want to miss what all goes into it, and he knows that better than I do.
That would be fine. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for that question. So, basically, the Long Range Transportation Plan is a product of the Metropolitan Planning Organization, the MPO. And so, the MPO is responsible for creating that plan, and what we end up doing is updating our existing LRTP every five years. That's a requirement in order for us to qualify for federal dollars, so we have to do it every five years. What we do locally, mostly because the planning department is both a city and a county planning department, and also, the administrative arm of the MPO, we coordinate our update of the comprehensive plan with the LRTP. And that is a, that is a very good planning practice, because what we are able to do is to have more of a seamless sharing of information from the land use plan that's in the comprehensive plan, which is that future vision of our growth and how we plan to develop and where we want to go with our growth. All that information, more or less, gets dumped into the LRTP process, and so, it's the same information. So, we don't have either competing jurisdictions talking about different goals and outcomes, or we are more confident about the data that's used to project our transportation needs, that's based on our local plan. So, from that, what happens is the MPO administers the process, so it is the, all the different partners that are part of the MPO. So, it's the city, the county, the state, there's various departments and agencies that are brought into that. And so, it is a multi-departmental, multi-agency, multi-level government effort that is coordinated to come up with that future transportation plan. And one of the biggest things that happens, and it's happening right now, is that the MPO has hired a consulting firm to do the technical work that basically takes all that data about future land use and existing land use, for that matter, is the first step, and updates the travel model so that we can have confidence in what the demands in the future will be. And what we do is we take the current traffic count information and knowledge that we have and create an updated model that reflects how the transportation system is working, and then, we use that model to develop the future scenarios of the, for the future. And that's how we get future traffic count numbers, and then, that feeds into the discussion about what needs are out there for future road improvements, for example. So, that's a really quick way of explaining how we do that. So, who's at the table is all those partners. So, we have staff from all those different agencies on a committee already, working on the LRTP. And what we will do throughout the process is report back to both the county board and the city council, as well as the MPO technical committee and the MPO officials committee, which is also represented by the city council and the county board, along with the mayor's office and the Nebraska Department of Transportation. And so, we provide all that information and update, and we also have a robust public involvement process, that's a requirement. And so, we have to do a lot of public outreach. It's a little challenging these days, given our limitations on public meetings, but we're still, we're still doing it, and we will continue to do it.
David, pardon me. So, when you work on this Long Range Transportation Plan during the comp plan, it seems to, I understand that as a very robust process with the staff and with public, but when you come back to it in five years and you're not in a comp plan overhaul mode, how do you, how do you manage it that way? And is, I'll ask my last question next.
Okay. Yeah, that's a good question too, because we do do it differently kind of every 10 years. So, what we do every 10 years is we do a more major update of the comprehensive plan, which is what we're undergoing right now. And the reason why that's more, we call it a more major update, is because we basically add years to the horizon when we do that. So, we're going, right now, we're going from 2040 to 2050. So, when you do that, you're just, you're introducing 10 more years of growth and 10 more years of change, and so, that is more, that in and of itself is more robust as far as planning effort is concerned. The actual process for the transportation plan is kind of the same every five years. The difference is, is that we don't change the horizon year necessarily for the transportation plan, because we only, we have a minimum of a 20-year window for the transportation plan. That's a federal requirement. Because we end up with a 30-year window when we do the major updates, that five-year more minor update doesn't have to change the horizon year, so it's kind of a strategic way to handle that. But we still update the model, we still go through a full-blown process to discuss it publicly. So, it's a little bit more of the same effort for the transportation plan, even though it's a little bit smaller effort for the comprehensive plan. effort for the transportation plan, even though it's a little bit smaller effort for the comprehensive plan.
Okay. And then how would, um, is there a limitation to who can, uh, participate in those meetings? Uh, is the city, uh, you know, given one or two spots for elected officials? And some, can people listen in even if they don't vote on the process?
Yeah, all of those meetings on the MPO level are all public meetings. I mean, they're, they can be attended by anybody. The voting membership, generally speaking, stays the same. Um, and the effort there is to have representation from the main, you know, partners in that. So that's you know, it, it generally stays the same. We, we have actually, um, we have a ma- I guess I wanted to make the point of saying we have a management plan that is approved through the state and the feds that we that's how our organization is set up. So we, we follow that and that's how the officials committee membership is put together. That's how the technical committee membership is put together. But all of those meetings are public, we publicly announce them, um, they're posted. We advertise them, um, we allow for the public to attend. We also, generally speaking, we do allow for public comment if there is anybody there, if they want to say something and so that it can be put on the record. So yeah, that's, it's, it's a very open process.
Thank you.
Uh, Tammy, go right ahead.
Thank you. So Liz, this may be a question for when you and I meet. Um, and I don't mean to go into the weeds, uh, because I'm not a numbers walk by any stretch of the imagination. But what I'm curious about, and you may have mentioned this as well, um, in terms of special assessment districts, um, how we are able to learn enough without causing damage when we're talking to our constituents. Um, and, and you and I are working on one now with Lonnie about what, how are those funded? When do we know? Unless it's always a muddy road. I mean, that's the kind of things that are kind of up close and personal as a council person. Are, are they even part of the budget? Or again, this may be for a different discussion than right now. But I'm curious as to what's that trigger or does that make any sense?
No, that, that does. And I, I don't have, um, some of the answers to that right here in front of me. So what I will do is I will add that to the list of topics for when you and I meet and we'll make sure to address that.
Keep it alive as well. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Jane.
Okay, um, James, you have another question. Go right ahead.
Yeah, um, I kind of have two questions if that's okay. The first one is, um, are the, uh, are streets that are existing, uh, currently listed, or is there a plan to include them in the future CIPs?
Or is like the, any street in Lincoln or is there a specific one you're thinking of?
Um, I'm talking about like when we list out the projects that we want to work on. Um, how do we make like, can you speak a little bit how we make that information available to the public? Like, is it online? Can they go through and see, uh, what like interior streets that, um, we are planning on and kind of a timeline and where the funding comes from for that?
Yes, absolutely. Let me pull something up here real quick. I'm gonna share my screen here real quick. Okay, um, if you, what we are doing, and right now we focused on Lincoln on the move, but if you go over to the keyword streets, this pulls up our streets website and, uh, this, as you probably know, the city is kind of undergoing a complete overhaul of our website. So this will change. And what we've done is we've focused on Lincoln on the move now, but the goal is once we have the new website up and running, we plan on doing this kind of information for all of the projects going forward. But, uh, here we have the timelines. At first, this gives you what we initially projected for revenue on Lincoln on the move versus what we actually collected. So gives you a quick eye view of, we did really well, October, November, December, January, even February. And then this was just updated on Friday, I think it was. Yeah, it was Friday afternoon. So we have, uh, the March numbers there. We have our prioritized projects. So this then will list out, here's our rehabilitation for those existing streets that you were just asking about, our growth projects, and then that RTSD project. So on the rehabilitation, what they've done is we have listed out each project and you have a breakdown of the timeline, the budgets, and then if you want more information, you can take that link to it and it'll give you more information on the project summary, the funding details, the map area, more information on the schedule, and then who you can contract, contact if you want more information about that specific project. And what we have done is, um, done that for all of the Lincoln on the Move projects that have been selected thus far. Here you can see, we don't have the projects, um, started yet, so the timeline's not there. These are still in development stages, uh, for the bidding process, those types of things. So this will be added once that information is known. And it is updated regularly. So it's as close to real time information as possible. And the goal on this is to really give everyone uh, as much information as possible, so they can track the projects, they can see how the money's being invested, and whether or not we're on schedule, off schedule, uh, what changes have been made, if any. And they can go right here in a one stop shop basically for more information. And there's more information on the advisory committee and the meetings that they have. There's also kind of the public participation results, uh, when they were going through that part of the program as well. So that is all on, uh, LTU, uh, Lincoln dot any dot gov. And streets is the, the key word for that.
And so that will be expanded to all streets that have, uh, repairs on schedule, where it'll list out kind of the timeline and, uh, the funding streams that it comes on, comes from?
That is the goal. Right now, I, uh, because we don't have that new website up, I don't want them to have to do it and then have to redo it and waste time doing that. So that is something that we will continue to build out and continue to improve for all of the streets projects. Right now it is just Lincoln on the move.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Liz, I have a couple of questions. Can you talk to me a little bit about the gas tax? Since fewer people are driving and fewer people are traveling around our country, how impactful will that be? And what are we projecting? Are, is that part of, you know, where you have the seventy point two million is a budgeted amount? Collected to date has been only fifty-two million. And then you settle on what you're projecting to be sixty-seven point seven million collected. But that's, I don't know if that's collected from us or everyone, from the, the six buckets that you walked us through.
That is part of, um, yes, obviously with the fuel tax going down, you also have lower fuel prices that ultimately reduces the number that we are getting. Uh, and that's a little harder, because there is some lag time from when we get those numbers. So we are just using projections, looking at what other states are doing. And I'm trying to, Thomas and Cindy Roth have really been working hard on this and trying to focus on what other states are doing. And we are expecting some decline, but at this point, sorry, I'm trying to find if I have that information available. They have been working on that and working with, um, Brandon's group to, so. Sorry. Trying to find if I had that one. But I can, I will look for it here, but I can also forward that to you, Jane.
Okay, or to everybody too. I think that would be helpful. And some of the slides you presented are very good as well. Um, I can ask you my next question while you're searching too. Um, you know, we, honest, I hear so much complaint about the wheel tax and what, what are the top like three myths about the wheel tax? Because you know, people are thinking we're spending it on, uh, all these, you know, parks and recreation, for example. They're always thinking we're taking that wheel tax and spending it on specific pet projects and, um, what are the, I mean, what are the restrictions? You talked about them briefly, but.
Yes, I, and, and that is, I think probably the biggest myth is that we can use it on everything but streets. And, and that is not the case. They are restricted on how we can use those. Uh, fifty percent does have to go to street improvements, operations and maintenance. And then, um, a little over thirty-five percent is only, can only be used for construction, design, right of way acquisitions. Um, and as well as for some bond indebted, indebtedness for those specific purposes. But it's limited to that. It can't be used for parks. It can't be used for general fund purposes. It has to be related specifically to the construction of streets. And then the last one is the fourteen point eight six percent, and that can only be used for rehabilitation on existing residential streets. And so those are the, the mills and overlays, the potholes, um, those types of things for existing streets that can't be diverted to new construction or anything like that. So that is the restriction, uh, on that wheel tax.
So when, when someone says you're spending our wheel tax on the trails.
Right, that would be incorrect.
That's incorrect. So we are not spending the wheel tax on any of the amazing trails that, and, uh, the network of trails that we have, because it's prohibited.
It is. It is direct, it is specifically prohibited. And, and and that's why on, when we're budgeting for streets, that we are very specific and that we try and keep all of the street funding together. So it, it doesn't get commingled. It's not held in the general funds and just divvied up amongst the departments.
So when I hear people say, my wheel tax keeps increasing every single year, what am I supposed to say to someone who asked me that question?
Well, I would, overall, the amount, I, I think what is misunderstood is the cost of road maintenance. Uh, we have, uh, there's, we expect kind of, uh, construction inflation of five percent every year. And so those costs keep going up. And that's just doing basic potholes and those kind of maintenance things are not cheap. And that's, uh, something that I don't think is well understood. And people's, the, the wheel tax doesn't cover, um, nearly enough on that. And we still have a big gap in between the maintenance costs and the wheel tax.
So David, I saw you raise your hand. Go right ahead.
Yes.
Thank you. Um, I guess I wanted to add to that information, just to make sure you're all aware that when we do, do the LRTP, um, the, the current one has this information in it and we will update that information in the new one. So it is a good source of explanation of all these different funding sources. Now, the current one obviously is four years old now. So it's a little bit outdated as far as the actual numbers, but the sources of the revenue are very much still ac- you know, accurate and useful. And what we do is we, we take the best information we have at the time of the update. And we show that and we show our work about how much revenue is coming from these different things and an explanation of what they can be used for as well. So that's in the plan too. And then that process of identifying what the priorities are is what we really work on for the new plan. And then effectively divvying up those big numbers over time and trying to put together the best transportation program we can. So that's, so all this information that Liz just explained is we do a good job of encapsulating that into the long range plan and then showing a realistic view of what the future can do. And I'll just make one last final point, which is every time we do this, we show that we are woefully short of being able to meet all the needs that the transportation system has over time. And that inflation rate really chews away at our value of our dollar. Um, so that's the challenge that we have, is that we have a lot more needs than we can do, at least at the time we want to. And so that, that is a lot of the work that we do when we do the LRTP.
But David, isn't, uh, the wheel tax, jumping back to the wheel tax, isn't that wheel tax capped right now? That we, it's capped at a certain amount and the only way we can raise that amount is if we have to vote on raising that amount of the wheel tax. Isn't it capped at seventy-two dollars and it's capped there until somebody recommends we change it?
That's, that's completely correct.
Cause some people say, well, my wheel tax, I paying more and more every single year for my wheel tax, but I want to be able to say to them, no, your wheel tax has been capped. It's been capped since last year. So you should most likely the value of your vehicle or should have been decreasing and therefore perhaps your contribution is decreasing as well.
Yeah, we do. We have over the years increased it, you know, occasionally something like in the tune of about once every five years on average. But it does not increase every year. It certainly does not increase automatically. It is a, a vote by the city to do that and it's a decision to do that.
Okay, and I, I know that when we were dealing with the MPO and the Transportation Improvement Plan, and I know that some officials had wanted to make some changes at that time. And maybe we can have a longer discussion on this, but I think some, some people felt frustrated that they wanted to provide their input as an elected official. But were discouraged at doing so because the process is quite extensive and it is open to the public throughout the entire process to, to offer input. Uh, and, and, but, you know, when, when is the appropriate time to make a change? It, uh, as an elected official, as we participate in the process?
Well, I, I would say, first of all, I would say that I wouldn't discourage anyone's, any elected official's, um, willingness to comment or to propose, um, changes. Uh, I think, I think that allows us to have a discussion about what what will be the best course of action at that point. Sometimes it is the best thing to do is to wait for the next five year update, because we need to have the big picture, look at things. Sometimes it is important to make a change in the middle of those five year periods. And the best example is one we did recently was when we amended the LRTP to include finally the South Beltway being a funded project. And so that required a major amendment and it wa- for, for good reason. Um, so we do update the plan, um, during those middle parts of those major updates. Uh, certainly we're always open to receive comment and input. Um, if there is a specific request for a change, we would then therefore study it. Um, and so again, and then it would be a process. It would, it would go through the appropriate subcommittees and go through the committee approval process up to that officials committee that we talked about earlier.
Okay, thank you. Are there any more questions for, for Liz? Or David, or even Donna? Donna has hung out with us, so. Any other questions? Okay, I don't see anybody raising their hand frantically. Thank you very much, Liz. Uh, the slides were great. I think that is really very helpful. So if you could send us uh, a copy of that. And thank you for the tutorial, showing us exactly where on our website we can find this stuff, you know, I think there is so much information and and sometimes we don't spend the, the time to explore as much as we would like to. So just having you walk us through that has been really, really helpful. So thank you very much. Um, if everybody's okay, then we're gonna just adjourn and then, uh, get back here at, uh, five thirty in eleven minutes, if that's okay with everyone.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we'll see everyone back at, at, uh, five thirty.